Pagsubang sa adlaw, ang kalino sa mata, ang nakasaksi sa bagong paglaon. Iandam ang kau kalino, para mabuhay o matulma, ang pangandoy naghihando sa kanunang. Igamitan o kuso ka akti o husto ka atang, o giubanan o pagsali sa kahita sa. Lupadupas, lupadukusot, iba inanga, ikaw usap kabanu, naguwas nun mabuhay, ikahanlukang, nayaw ng tanan. Lupadupas, lupadukusot, kay ang tanang sa imo mo sulit. Umaug kalino, ipatig babag, lupaganog, lupaganog, lupan.
Akong pangandoy, nga half million ang akong sildo matag bulan, parehas akong papa? Huh? Half million ang sildo si papa matag bulan? Dili, mokya po din ang pangandoy, parehas me. Eh, iba ikata.
The fifth regular session of the 21st Sangkwenyang Bayan is now called order. Please all rise for our invocation to be led by the Honorable Rina Idrote Kinyo, to be followed by the singing of our national anthem, Bukidun May Home, Anak Habanwa, and our municipal hymn. To be followed by the recitation of our Vice Mayor's Creed and the PCL Creed.
Let us bow our heads and make the sign of the cross in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Almighty and loving Father, as we gather today for the 21st session of the Sangkwenyang Bayan of Manolo Forteich, we bow our heads in gratitude for the gift of life, of service, and of this opportunity to work for the good of our community. Shield us with your love and mercy, O Lord. Cast away every form of evil that seeks to hinder our mission. Let those who wish ill upon others be overcome not by anger, but by the power of your light, so that no darkness may prevail in this hall or in our hearts. Stay with us, Lord, as we deliberate and decide on matters that affect the lives of our people. Bless us with wisdom, understanding, and humility, so that our discussions and resolutions may bring fairness, justice, and progress to every family, every farmer, every worker, every youth, and every elder in Manolo Forteich. Guide our thoughts, our words, and our actions that we may always place the welfare of our people above personal interests and serve with honesty, compassion, and integrity. All this we ask through Christ, our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Bayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magiliw, kaya sa sirahtanan, alam ng puso sa itipoy buhay. Lupang nila, kuya ng magiting, sa manludupin, ikapasi sidil. Sanodadap, utok sa sikoyan, sanabi kong bonggao. Ayinadap, tsulakawin sa, kaya ang inamahar. Ang isakap, atawat, kuyatang, ay daratingin. Ang ituwin, atarong, yakayda, ang haydi matitingin. Lupan aparo, ngangwar, habik, paksikta, kue ngamit, sa pibigbo. Ang inikaya, na paray, ang napi, ang pamanay, ngangka ilsa'yo.
Wherever I may go, the distant land to see, I long to go back soon to sweet Bukidnon home. Where lily mountains high, with forests of red, bring memories to me, the home I want to see. The broad and great lattes, the rivers winding through. My heart don't long no more, on wonders of the world. There'll be gentle wind, that peace the travelers brought. Will blow and ever blow, wherever I may go. The silver waterfalls, in distance wanton sea. In beauty they express, the stranger's sincere praise. The long and seeks and goes, the canyons deep and wide. Will ever be each night, in all who can not mind. There my heart lives to be, in far away, the green land, under blue starry skies. Where love and joy never die. There my heart lives to be, in far away, the green land, under blue starry skies. Where love and joy never die.
Isang kahayon na, kala ng huliang, dinita bukidno, na nakapadman. Unto'tan matangka, dalasang ng kumak. Patangka, patangka, natung kay matagwa. Pastuha, happy nyaha. Lanin di, biglang ka. Sigat na, uradan.
Ang kahayon sa sitaka, makita ang kanina uka bulanan. Kadagaya dawalay, kinukoban. Manuko iya kanin kanalan. Manolo Fortis sa asukadungganan. Ang kinatas, matibok, tiraupsan. Nakipisol sa kalambuhan. Ang iyang halapalyo kauhan, nagsaysaysay ang kadunahan. Napusa, panagiusap, ang areskon sa dreka kauhan. Ipapig babag, umagmatik dadi. Sa tibuok, kakatilingba. Minahal na Manolo Fortis, matahum na ho lusut nagipoyan. Kadunay na ho pasidunggan, ugandungun sa kahang duran. Minahal na Manolo Fortis, matahum na ho lusut nagipoyan. Kadunay na ho pasidunggan, ugandungun sa kahang duran.
The Vice Mayor and my covenant with my people should devote myself to public. For divine providence and virtue of the people, I am mandated to preside over the local legislature that with integrity and statemanship I shall lead the local legislature to enact measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. With the Almighty God help me consecrate myself for the people and for all to serve. For the PCL Creed.
Please be seated for the oral call, Madam Secretary.
Honorable Ronaldo Elbagayas Jr., Honorable Miguel Didi Mata, Honorable J.S. Alvarezi, Honorable Rina Idrote Kinyo, Honorable Elsa Bereda Gunlay, Honorable Plora May De Pinaso, Honorable Joy Lavisores Cordovés on official business, Honorable Rachel Abalas Bayakag, Honorable Kristi Liparto Salabe, Honorable Alex Di Payanga, Honorable Mary Jane Pigilayan, Honorable Princessy JB Padin. There are 11 members present, Honorable Presiding Officer.
11 members present, Colonel Mr. Beideclaire. Our majority floor, ladies and gentlemen, please, the Honorable Kinyo.
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer. We are now the approval of the Order of the Business. Since the copies were submitted via online, I move to approve the Order of the Business.
So there's a motion for the approval of the Order of Business for today's session, any second?
I second.
Any comments? Sir Bignan, the motion is approved.
Likewise, Mr. Chair, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to approve the reading and adoption of the minutes of the fourth regular session held on July 24, 2025.
May we dispense first the oral reading?
Oh, yes. I move to dispense the reading and consideration of the minutes of the fourth regular session held on July 24, 2025.
So there's a motion for the dispensation of the oral reading of the minutes of the fourth regular session held last July 24, 2025, any second?
I second.
Any comments? Sir Bignan, the motion is approved.
And likewise, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to approve the reading and the adoption of the minutes of the fourth regular session held on July 24, 2025.
So there's a motion for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the fourth regular session held last July 24, 2025, any second?
I second.
Any corrections? Sir Bignan, the motion is approved.
We are now in the entertainment of visitors since a while ago the DILG Regional Officers were here. And now, we would like to call on our counselor from Valencia, Mr. Totong Sistoso.
But first, can we suspend our internal rules, the procedures first?
I move to suspend our internal rules, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So just a motion to suspend our internal rules to accommodate our visitor, any second?
I second.
Any comments, Sir Bignan? So we'll now have our, the honorable, the pride of the city of Valencia, the future president of the Philippine Counselors League Bukidnon Chapter. Let's all welcome the Honorable Mauricio Sistoso Jr. Okay, go ahead, Kuns. You may now have the floor. Pwede, pwede ka mo dawat o question ano ni?
Good morning. Morning. Una sa tanan, magpasalamat ko sa Tibuok grupo sa Manolo Forteich nga gialaw ko this morning to be here to formally ask your support para sa kaning atuang tahas nga ginapangayo sa atuang mga kauban nga konsehal sa Tibuok Bukidnon. So, Mr. Chair, allow me to take mga 15 minutes of your time.
Wow, no problem.
Magpaila o kinsa si konsehal Totong o Gunzag yud ang akong katiyuan ka montaga din eh. Una sa tanan, magpaila ko, ugbalik, Mr. Chair. Ako si Mauricio Totong Sistoso Jr. Ang ikaw walo nga anak ni former municipal counselor Mauringsistoso o katong among negosyo sa kagayan di oro kaniadto katong malay balay agri supply at tubangan sa dakong nga Catholic Church sa may gayasanong nga city. Diba, diba kita mong negosyo kaniadto?
Nasa sintryo karoon?
Ka na sintryo karoon, sir, abay anak.
Inyo ng sintryo.
Unta. Ako ang ikaw walo nga anak nila, de nahimo kong barangay kagawad sa barangay poblasyon 2013-2018 nga term, katong extended term, dayon nahimo kong counselor sa Valencia City atong 2022 up to 2025. That was my first term under the banner of Bagong Bukidnon dayon this is my second term karoon ang 2025 up to 2028 uban sa BPP ugwan Bukidnon. So karongbuntag, Mr. Chair. But before that, si konsehal Totong di ay, ang akong naiskwilaan is agricultureist ko, so animal science ang ako major. So akong specialty na ako sa farming, naapotay ka may farm sa Valencia karoon de naapotay ka may negosyo sa mga pet supplies, mga para saero. Karongbuntag, Mr. Chair, na ako diri tungod ni sa tahas sa atong pinalanggang Governor Unil to take this opportunity nga makaserve sa fellow counselors throughout Bukidnon as your president sa Liga NATO. So karongbuntag, Mr. Chair, gusto lapod na ako ipa ilaiila ang atuang kauban nga lineup sa bando na to karoon sa atuang lakaw. Sa pagform, pagforma ni nga lineup, Mr. Chair, consolidated effort ni sa tanan nga mga municipyo nga akong maagian, then ilang mga suggestion o kinsa ilang ipadala sa ilahang tagsatagsa ka municipyo kay ang concept mga ganito karoon, as much as possible, we want nga out of these 15 elected officers together with the board kinanglan prorated sa throughout the four districts of Bukidnon. So ang ako bilang presidente, ang atuang vice president akong gihangyo si konsehal Di Mata from diri sa inyo sa Manolo Forteich. Dayon, thank you. Dayon ang atuang secretary general is si konsehal Galiano from Lantapan, Second District. Ang atuang treasurer is from Third District, si konsehal Jetro Pizarro. Batanon papod ni siya anak ni Mayor Pizarro sa Don Carlos. Ako pagkakitaan ako kang Jetro, ako gengi personal hangyo si mayor nga kung pwede siya atuang treasurer kay manghood na ako, Mr. Chair, baso maragdili kay koma ikok og sugo kay banghood na ko. Ang atuang auditor is si Gikan sa Municipality of Quezon sa Third District, si konsehal Clyde Bagyo. Si konsehal Clyde Bagyo is isa ni siya ka CPA by profession. So that is why gihangyo ginako ni uban ng iyang mayor nga siya ang itake niya ni office kaning auditor kay, bilang usaka CPA, kinanglan ginato iyang expertise ani to monitor and to do the proper auditing and reporting sa atuang panudlanan sa PCL para do nagkitay proper nga reporting o auditing sa atuang mga panudlanan din ha. Ang atuang PRO is Gikan sa First District, atong silingan sa Libuna, si konsehal Buta. Dayon ang atuang business manager is Gikan sa Kibawi, si konsehal Ranoko, Gikan sa Third District. Then ang atuang mga board sa PCL, we have eight elected board members and 21 appointed. Ang atong eight nga elected, tama ni siya sa maagian atong mga municipyo, Mr. Chair, dayon kung kinsa ika-signify nga interested mo ni atong nabutang. So ang una diri, Gikan sa San Fernando, si konsehal Haliasgo, sa Second District. Dayon sa, ang ikaduha, si konsehal Noble from Talakag, sa First District. Dayon.
Kinsa ni Noble, ka ng asawa?
Dili, sir, si Armando.
Ah, manghood, manghood ni Vice Sauna?
Oo, tong lalaki, oo. Dayon, diri sa Manolo Forteich, si konsehal Apinaso, tungod ni sa katong pagmeeting na mo sa,
Tindog na sayo.
Sa Bambu Papabillion tong mga nagligad niya semana. Dayon sa Lantapan, si konsehal Eric Di Bivar. Dayon sa,
Anak po ni, ni mayor?
Igsoon, sir. Igsoon, marag banghood ni former mayor karoon, Vice Mayor, oo. Dayon sa Kabanglasan, si engineer Inday Butal. Batanon papod ni siya bago first termer sa Kabanglasan. Dayon, ang ikaunom, si konsehal Buliser sa Kadingilan, sa Third District. Ang ikapito, si konsehal Nilson Yuro, sa Third District. So since eight ni kinanglan, Mr. Chair, napay usa kulang sa ika-eight. So kung napag gusto mo dugang din eh sa inyo ang grupo, I very much welcome na atong iad. Anyway, wala may restriction, Mr. Chair, og pila kabuo o asagikan nga municipyo. But since this is one of my last municipality nga bisitahan, ang sunod ano eh, Don Carlos na lang ang kulang na ko, ayah, Don Carlos na lang. So if ever na ay gusto ninyo idugang, we can still accommodate more.
One more?
Yeah, one more, as elected. Then, sa board, sa appointed, nga 21 ka board of directors nga appointed, Mr. Chair, this time around, sa atong term, tungod sa pagtuyok na to sa Bukidnon, ang mulu sa atong tulog ka ex-official members is dili kay sila ka katagaan o dakong nga consideration or pagtagad sa PCL.
Ang gaspado din eh, ex-official?
But they are part of our structures kay konsehal manggit sila sa ato ang mga tagsatagsa ka LGU. So that is why nakahuna-huna ata, Mr. Chair, together sa atong team nga, one of the appointed, one of the 21 nga appointed board members is Gikan sa ABC, Gikan sa IPMR, and Gikan sa SK. Ang ilang ipadala din eh ga depende sa ilahang federation o kinsa gusto nila ipadala kay,
So one out of three, so narasa tulog?
Yeah, no, no. One representative each, Mr. Chair. Usasa ABC, usasa IPMR, and usasa SK.
Pero 21 namang ka ang iappoint.
Yeah, so,
Pero dili siya per municipality.
Dili, sir, Gikan is sa ilang federation, sir. So sa ilang federation, they are 22 members napod sila. So like the SK, ang initial decision sa SK was ang ilang vice president ang ilang ipadala kay definitely ang chairman is medyo busy naman yud, so ang vice president nila ilang ipadala. So depende na dayon sa IPMR and sa SK, wala pa, sa Liga, wala pa sila kadesay. But they already know about this kaya ako naman ang napresent sa ilaha during sa visit na ko sa ilang federation meetings sa malay balay. So moto ato ang lineup nga na formulate, Mr. Chair. Kani sunod, Mr. Tuguti ko maghatag sa mga plataforma o programa na to sa PCL kay gusto na ko nga atong mga kauban sa Manolo. Ilang makita si konsehal Totong, kinipagtindog na ko diri sa inyong atubangan. Dili lang ni siya kay nagsunod na ko sa order sa atong gubernador. Bat aduna po kita'y mga panglantaw o mga programa para sa ato ang grupo sa PCL, no? So una diri, Mr. Chair, dibutang na ko diri sa ato ang platforms is ang kiningitawag na tuog equal distribution of PCL resources. Kaya nga atong opisina sa atong PCL, parehas po ni siya budget nga madawat sa ato ang usaka board member. So nangutahan ako, according kang Governor Unil, last term 2022 up to 2025, ang usaka opisina sa board member aduna'y 8 million per year nga budget. So sa atong panahon puhon, kung the same yapon nga budget ang ihatag, bat hubo lima dugang-dugangan. But if ever the same. So ang atuang 8 million, Mr. Chair, ang 4 million of that atong ibilin sa atong opisina as operating expenses, office supplies, and everything. And the rest of that 4 million will be prorated among 22 LGUs equally divided. Kung imong tanahon, ang 4 million divided into 22 municipalities narasa sa mga 180,000 per year. Kung imong tanahon, gamay kaayo para sa Manolo ang 180, bat as I've said, equally distributed resources. Bahalag un sa kagamay, basta ang tanan LGU makatilaw sa resources sa atong opisina, no? Kay dili po kong musugot nga, tungod kay ako puhon ang makalingko din ha, ang Valencia na po'y magtiba-tiba sa resources sa opisina. It will be equally distributed. Na ay municipyo sa, nagmention, imong siya nga, dapat dili equal, dapat based on population ang pagbahin sa maong,
Yung babitahan eh.
O, akong ginan nga alcance mo's Valencia o malay balay kay dagpas pas kay may mga nakdad to, daghan kaya mo ang population. So ma alcance. So that is why, to make it easier pod and more, marag medyo patas-patas gamay, it will be equally distributed na lang diretsyo. Then, pagabot pod sa educational assistance, ang opisina sa PCL aduna'y more or less last term na to, 2022 up to 2025, aduna kita'y 300 students every semester nga matabangan sa financial assistance nga more or less 3,000 pesos. So given the same reyapon nga budget atong ma-operate karoon nga tuig, karoon nga term, ang atong nakita, ka ng 300 ka bata, ato yapon na siyang iprorate among all 22 LGUs. Para dili kaayo lisod, Mr. Chair, pwede na to siya i-one is to one, usaka konsehal sa kada municipyo, iyang marecommend. So for example, Manolo, you have 11. So 11 kabuo kang inyong ma-recommend.
Nanak kang nanak.
Oh, so that's, ulo gamay. Kung imong pupunta naon, Mr. Chair, 11 ka bata out sa pilakalibong ng estudyante ang Manolo gamay kaayo, bat as I've said, dapat yud equally distributed ang atong resources. Magamay man or madako, dapat equally distributed. Then, pagabot pod sa mga JO, Mr. Chair, ang atuang province, more or less kada board member, aduna sila'y 18 ka JO sa kada opisina. Ang atong nakita, Mr. Chair, pwede na to na siya ihimu, mahangyo ta, ato na mahi, kaya pa man na nato himo on siguro nga mga 20 kabuo. Then, out of the 20, ato na siyang ihatag sa kada usaka LGU, sa kada municipyo, kung kinsa inyong gusto nga ma-province paid ka JO, nga diri naka-assigned sa inyong municipyo. Then, pwede nga ni nga kung pwede, tungod kay JO na siya na to sa atong opisina, kung pwede, kini nga mga JO inyong iassign muning mga bata nga pwede bitaw katong eskwila o mga lo sa malay balay. Kay ang atong opisina sa atong PCL, Mr. Chair, aduna'y kwarto sa ubos. So if ever magabihan sila sa, So if ever magabihan sila sa ilang eskwila sa BSU pwidi sila mapaalaw na to nga matulog sa atong quarters dito sa Ubus nga di na maputang ma technical nga nagamit ni Consejal Toto nga personal nga patulugan siyang mga estudyante kay JO manato. Diba so at the same time ang kanang JO nga katulog dito nga atong estudyante mo opod ng murili sa tiklar sa dugo kung aduna'y dugo nga gakinanglan nga emergency sa gabi eh so dili na kinanglan mangita sa ako or mangita sa any ah PCL officer para makapangayog dugo ang taga Manolo nga na ang nagabihan dito sa probinsya sa ah probinsyal kapitol na to no so pwidi ra ang atong dugo anytime aduna po'y makahatag kina may mga estudyante nga katulog sa ilalum opato siya ka kwarto so I believe we can accommodate. So that's one way pod nga makatabang pod ang resources sa PCL sa gamay nga pamaagi sa atong mga estudyante labi na to mga aspiring lawyers na to. So ah equal distribution of PCL resources. Pagabot dayon sa mga financial assistance atong opisina sa PCL makaginamatay grants sa PCL sa mga ah financial assistance labi na sa hospitalization ah sa burial assistance and everything. This time around akong nakita pagabot sa medical assistance tungod sa kadagahan na to dayon gamay ramang kayo ang ni claim like for example kami sa Balensya last term mas only tuluran namo kakauban ang naadmit no? So akong nakita pwidi nga instead of ten thousand nga nakapeg ang medical assistance this time around based on board resolution and based on availability of funds it will be um a percentage basis sa imuhang aktwal bill kay lahi man tong kalibanga lang ang iyahang naadmit siya kalibanga lang kay nasobrahat pamistaan ng dominggo unya lahi pod tong hospital bill sa ah na high blood kay grabe ang solisitasyon no lahi pod to siya so that's why ang ato ang hospital bill kung kaya sa atong ay I believe kaya sa atong funding it will be percentage basis sa atong hospital hospital bill. Then pagabot sa burial assistance ah kaluway sa ginoo sa proteksyon sa ginoo sa atong tanan sa previous nga term na to sa out of two hundred forty-six takabook ang gikuha sa ginoo morag wala raka morag duha or tulog kabook ra? Ang duharra sir no so
Duha rebutan luat?
Duharra ang ang nahuman ang ilang misyon sa sa kalibutan no so daghan patatrabaho unun so it's because gamay ramang gitso and gusto pod na to mapakita sa pamilya sa 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 atong kauban nga nipahulay ang presensya sa opisina sa PCL atong nakita nga pwede na to i-increase ang ato ang burial assistance to fifty or more than or kaya na to of one hundred fifty if if the funding permits we can give one hundred fifty or more para medyo mabati iman sa sa atong kauban sa pamilya sa atong kauban nga nagpahulay ang presensya sa ato ang federation no nga naata diri nga muabag sa welfare sa ato ang mga constituents no? So um then napuwi sa rakita pwidi podta mo mo mukuha og ah if kaya na to ay I believe kaya na to ang kining makahatag tao executive checkup sa ato ang mga elected officials kung dili na to kaya ang once a year at least man lang once in every term makahatag tag free executive checkup sa ilaha kay akong nakita katong dito ta sa sa Boracay na minaw ko atong gapamaligya og og ah morag healthcare plan dito which is doable kaayo kay seven thousand naman ang ilahang ah premium nga gi pangayod dito no so we can do that nga noman nga gusto na to naaning free executive checkup it's because we want as I've said we want to to promote yet ang welfare sa ato ang mga kauban nga mga ah elected officials. So siguro Mr. Chair um kanalang siguro akong mahisgutan ah regarding sa mga pla- programs although daghan pamantag mga kamradiri ang lastly the board of the board meeting di ay yeah ah ang board meeting na to sa PCL every one once a week ah once a month ah every end Friday of the month no sa malay balay. This time around sa atong term Mr. Chair akong nakita to promote camaraderie among us ato ni siyang irotate kung depende kung kinsang LGU ang willing nga mag nga maghost but the funding and the resources will be used ang iya ya punsa PCL for example si Manolo ang mo mo mention nga diri then diri tamag board meeting para pagkahuman sa official business sa board meeting we can invite ang ato ang mga kauban sa Manolo mga neighboring municipality to have lunch with us no sa PCL nga mga officers para to promote more camaraderie among us kay kung nabantayan ninyo ah siguro morag ako rin yon permi makita sa Manolo sa Balensya nga group last year no kay pag pag sport fest na to diri bisag nagbitbit sa Tarp ako regyo'do sa so muna siya nga ah isan ako nakita kay syempre di pod ni mo mamahayan ako mga kauban kay si Consejal Rully di matu basketball player si Consejal Junjun di matu basketball player pero ug sabong pato atong gi organize diri adang abot gitto sila no? So muna nga pagabot sa sport fest dili kaayo tanan pararyas og og hilig no? So that is why ah one way to promote camaraderie among us dili lang sa atong mga sport activities but kining mga board meeting na to atong irotate throughout bukid nun kay that is one way also in promoting our local tourism no? Kay para makakita pod ang uban nga mga ah exchange of idea kay mua magyilahing learning nga paspas ang kung dili makita git sa atong mga kaugalingong mata. So siguro Mr. Chair diha lang dili ko nalang ni hot don tanan kay moraga lalum ng oto um but before I end ah pwidi ko mahuлат og mga question og suggestion sa ato ang mga kauban reassured kining among lineup nga atong napilaila diri sa inyong karoon we will serve PCL with the best of our ability and we will serve PCL as an independent body although would there is a a blessing Gikan sa atong mga leaders sa bukid nun but this is us also being a god soldier sa ato ang ah political party sa bukid nun. Kay if dili na magunato sugdan ang panagiusa among us the progress and the ah ang ato ang pag move on for move forward will be mas hinay so that is why I am calling sa ato ang mga colleagues na ah PCS PCL is a independent body and we will work on PCL as an independent body but we have to unite and we have to help each other kay nga noman kitang tanan nga naadiri sa sulod sa session room kabalog gitta sa mga kakulangon og mga limitations sa tagsa tagsa na to kay LGU nga dili na to kaya og kita regyo'do paninkamo sa atong kaugalingong LGU sa kadagahan sa ato ang problema og mga programa nga gusto gusto ah ipang-promote sa ato ang mga tagsa tagsa kay LGU we really need to help each other para mas paspas ang ato ang pag pag-uswag sa unahan so again Mr. Chair thank you very much ang inyong panahon oh ginahot unta nga magkita kita ta sa August fifteen sa Luisas ah Pabilion thank you.
So thank you very much Honorable Mauricio Sisto So Junior the from the city of Balensya any questions? suggestions Honorable Lepardo?
Hello Cons good morning I am so intrigued sa equally distributed na resources for the twenty-two ah for the twenty municipality and two cities. So nasa na siya in cash lugar pagka-distribute or how are going to distribute equally the resources?
Okay
And number two and number two nakamention ka nga you will have educational assistance and one ah one counselor, one scholar so is it kanang financial na ang ilang scholarship? Tapos two nasa na siya amount na cash ba ihatag sa scholar and then B? Ah morato?
Dora?
Morato ang question di?
Okay okay una katong sa scholar no atong klarohon kay basin og ah dili siya scholarship git ma'am kay kung when 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 they say scholarship moras siyang mahulog nga ah tuition and everything this will be a financial assistance sa estudyante ah in amount of more or less nasa mga three thousand pesos each student? No in in sem one sem per sem. So iko regyo'd ni siya o taga Manolo siyang eskwila siya kagayan iko regyo'd ni pamlitin niapa ingo kagayan no og primirong bulan nga supply sa pagani oto. Then ah the resources madam ah ma'am nga imong gi question is ah this ka musulod ni siya sa sa atua as kuwan mo guni kay budget man ni siya sa office good Mr. Chair so dili pwidi nga cash ni siya mugawa so this will ka come in Manolo Forte in a form of maybe ah mga ginagmay like banko, solar lights or anything ah masulod na to sa ato ang PPMP sa atong office. Then depende ya punsa board kung sa ilang gusto gusto na'y usaka municipyo nga ilang gusto matabangan sila sa mga signagees nila. So depende so we can kay pwidi magunang nga paghimo na to sa PPMP na to per office ato na na siya daang i i classify kung kinsay municipyo nga gustog banko kinsay municipyo gustog solar lights kinsay nga municipyo gustog signagees and everything kay ang procurement and I will be done by the province ya pun ah thank you. Okay
Next follow up question?
Ang JO day sir nasa na siya sir nakastation here dito maguli uli lugar?
Diri ma'am nakastation sa inyuha. Diri sa inyuha ang LGU so of course Gikan ginadinhi. Yeah but as I've said mas ginein encourage na ko nga kung pwidi ang inyong kuwan katong eskwila malay balay kay wat na lang makatabang kina mo guyan kayo ang resources na to special kapayad tagkurintig tubig dito din way gagamit sa atong kwarto. No so to help kay para gamay ramang atong funding to help more to help more kay kung JO rapilaris will dos JO gamay kayo usahay muabot usahay malangay nga i way labot i prinda pagidang ATM. So pwidi na to siya kanang eskwila malay balay para pwidi na to siya i-accommodate dito sa Ubus opisina sa PCL kay dili namatama technical Mr. Chair nga gigamit ni Consejal Toto nga boarding house ang opisina sa Ubus kay mga trabahanti man na to. So di pod na to pwidi mapatulog ang dili na to JO kay ma technical man ta government facility unya nahimong
Dahil paminahan mo ang mga scholar ni president mayang kipatulog sa end boarding house?
Morag delikado ba niya labi pa poros lalaki ang na dito na delikado. Anyway thank you Mr. Chair ma'am I hope naanswer na ko 'yung mga question thank you.
Eh anymore queries, questions, clarifications? If mat kayo ah Honorable Sisto So pwidi pagaboto diri tubangan?
Thank you very much thank you very much everybody.
And we ah first acknowledge our municipal administrator Engineer Joey Gayd and our municipal legal officer Attorney Risi Hamila.
But before that I think we need to ah call first the HR in behalf of Ma'am Katte Gachalian si Ma'am Marian?
Thank you sir good morning everyone's honorable members of the Sunguniyang Bayan. On behalf of the supervising head of the Human Resource Management Office Ms. Catherine C. Gachalian I respectfully appear before this esteemed body to present for your review and concurrence the following appointments issued by the municipal mayor in conformity with the applicable provisions of the Civil Service Commission's revised rules and appointments and other human resource actions as amended and pursuant to the Mandates of Republic Act Number 7160 otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991. For most among these is the appointment of Engineer Joey Cesar M. Gayd to the position of Municipal Government Department Head One Municipal Administrator and that of Attorney Risi Hamila to the position of Municipal Government Department Head One Municipal Legal Officer both of whom have been found to possess the requisite minimum qualification standards duly prescribed under the existing civil service laws and the Local Government Code. These appointments are being made under ecoterminal status reflective of the nature of trust and confidence that inherits in these key positions. One tasked with coordination of administrative machinery and the other with ensuring that the rule of law and sound legal judgment guide executive actions. In this regard, I submit these appointments not as perfunctory administrative acts but as integral components in the pursuit of principled governance, institutional fortitude, and ethical public leadership. These appointees are not only qualified in form but aligned in spirit with the fundamental values that animate the service of the republic. I therefore humbly seek the the concurrence of this honorable body that by such affirmation we collectively uphold the tenets of merit, competence, and lawful exercise of discretion in the administration of local government affairs.
Okay is the qualification standards due to the equal hairstyle or?
So may I call on our Engineer Joey Cesar M. Gayd and Attorney Risi Hamila? So, first let us hear from Engineer Joey Gayd.
Thank you Marian, and ah, good morning to this honorable body, Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche and um, here I am again today for the third time for the three terms of the local chief executive. First to the now Vice Governor Clive de Quinio and the second term of our honorable Roelio N. Quinio. So um, first and foremost, I would like to thank our Heavenly Father for ah, giving the the trust and confidence of our local chief executive to me as the appointed municipal administrator. And um, rest assured to this honorable body that I will continue to serve ah, the L G U, ah, the same as I have served for the last six years. And um, of course with fair and ah, utmost trust from our local chief executive as well as I will continue to propose ah, resolutions or endorsements to whatever is ah, for the benefit of the constituents of Manolo Fortiche. Thank you and ah, good morning.
Thank you Sir Joey. May questions from the members? Greetings, who goods? Yes, the ah Attorney Hamila.
Good morning Mister Chair and to all the honorable members of the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche. So, pardon me ha, nagmasko kay delete, humutang inyong one atong session hall but iubo maguggo, sobas matakda no. Anyway, ah, first and foremost no, salamat po sa kuwan no, the, na renew, na renew ang mga appointment ni Sir Joey, no, with the concurrence of this Sangguniang Bayan. And of course, ah, this is one way of, for the first time, unlike ah Sir Joey, third time na doon na nagappear diri for the appointment, but for me as the new legal, ah municipal legal officer, this is my first time to appear, no? And this is ah, one way of saying, or a direct way of saying that ah, magtrabaho ang tarong kay ecoterminals na ka. Anyway, kidding aside no, salamat kayo and rest assured that we will abide by all the rules and no, we will protect the interest of the local government of Manolo Fortiche para simba ko dito mga kasuhan na alang siguro, salamat kayo sa tanan.
Thank you Attorney Hamila, and ang legal officer is a ecoterminals position?
Yes, same with the provincial legal officer, Mister Chair, ah, ecoterminals.
And also the administrator.
I believe morag kami radoha ang ecoterminals nga kuwan, at the pleasure of the local chief executive.
Okay, questions? I think all a question, General Alvarez.
Dolly, non Mister Chair, ah, I believe in the um competency qualification of the two appointees, and ah, I'd like to congratulate them Mister Chair, the minority has no objection to their um promotion or appointment Mister Chair. So, we just called them in keeping with our sacred tradition Mister Chair. Yung mga siluso, maguning mga, mga council members sa province kay umaora lang salary grade, no? Ayahay ba nila ano, ipatawag, sumuno monang tradisyon kaniya dito. Ah, I don't know what's, there should be a better reason than tradisyon pero we're just glad nga na sila and they're here and ah, we've heard their commitment to ah, ah, serve the people Mister Chair to the best of their ability. So, thank you and congratulation again to the two appointees.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anymore?
Ah Mister Chair, ah lastly, I would like to express ang gratitude po no sa outmost support sa Sangguniang Bayan with all the mga endorsements na mo. No, may differ with the ah, concerns or political views or kuwan, but ah, nagid ang inyong ganun yang suporta sa mga mga gepang endorse nga mga memorandum agreement or anything resolution ba ka gepang ano sa Executive Department to the ah Legislative Department. Thank you so much Mister Chair.
Thank you, thank you Attorney Hamila. Anymore? I think all ah, siguro so, can we add a photo up once ah, once a return ramane? Let's leave the suspension of our internal rules.
Mister Chair, I move to resume the House rules. We are now in the reference of the business for the first reading.
For item one, proposed ordinance of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled an ordinance establishing guidelines for the installation and maintenance of functional CCTV cameras along major roads, alleys, and sidewalks within Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon to enhance evidence gathering, aid in case filings, and prevent gender-based sexual harassment in streets and public spaces. Authored by the Honorable Mary Jane Pigilayan and co-authored by the Honorable J S Alvarez and the Honorable J L Cordovess.
I move to ah, move, I move to transfer this, refer this to Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Peace and Order.
Refer to Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Peace and Order.
Item two, proposed ordinance of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled an ordinance establishing a municipal assistance desk in the municipality of Manolo Fortiche to provide immediate support and ensure access to social welfare programs for individuals and families experiencing crisis situations and for other purposes authored by the Honorable Joy L. Cordovess.
I move to ah, refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations Committee on Social Services.
Refer to Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Social Services.
Item three, proposed resolution number 2025-115 BP of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled Resolution Congratulating Ms. Jascha Maxindal, a resident of Agusan, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, for waiting com laude in the 71st commencement exercises of Central Mindanao University College of Nursing held on July 25, 2025 at the CMU Convention Center authored by the Honorable Rena Iquino.
I move that this must be taken as item one A.
Transfer to item one A.
Item four, proposed resolution number five-115 BP of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled Resolution Congratulating and Commending the L B Pickle Ball Club Team Manolo Fortiche for winning championships in various categories during the Ayala Mall's Pickle Mall Pickle Ball Tournament Championship Season Three held from July 26 to 27, 2025 at Ayala Mall's Bermosa Imuska Beauty authored by the Honorable Rena Idrati Quinio.
I move that this must be ah, taken as item one B.
Transfer to item one B.
Item five, proposed resolution number 2025-116 BP of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled Resolution Expressing Deep Sympathy and Profound Condolence to the Family on the Untimely Demise of Mr. Alejandro Nog Butong Arinal, Local Youth Development Officer of L G U. Manolo Fortiche and Honoring His Life, Dedication, and Contributions to the Youth and Community Development of Manolo Fortiche and the Province of Bukidnon authored by Honorable Rena Iquino.
I move that this must be transferred as item one C.
Transfer to item one C.
Item six, proposed resolution number 2025-117 BP of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled Resolution Commending Ms. Maria Carmelita G. Agbalog for her exemplary performance in securing second place in the recently concluded 2025 Likhang Kababaihan Business Plan Competition of the Department of Migrant Workers here currently requesting the Honorable Jose Manuel F. Alba representative of the First District of Bukidnon to allocate funds for the construction of a stage, installation of electrical connections, and the provision of lechers at the covered court of the Milag Integrated School, Barangay de Milag, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon authored by the Honorable Miguel D. Di Mata.
I move that this must be transferred as item one E.
Transfer to item one E.
Item eight, proposed resolution number 2025-119 BP of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled Resolution Respectfully Requesting the Department of Science and Technology Region 10 through the Technical Manager of the Regional Metrology Laboratory, Mr. Ronald A. Pangan, meet to E C T to conduct training on metrology calibration for the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche authored by Honorable Kristi Lipartos Salak.
This must be referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Ecology, Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, and Committee on Barangay Affairs.
Refer?
Yeah, I move to a resolution. Transfer this business of the day as item one.
One F.
F?
For item nine is proposed resolution number 2025-120 BP of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled Resolution Requesting the Manolo Fortiche Roads and Traffic Administration to conduct nighttime operations along the San Miguel to Quijarit Road portion to deter illegal motorcycle drug races and to apprehend traffic violators authored by the Honorable J S Alvarez.
I move to transfer this as item one G.
Transfer to item one G.
Item ten is resolution number 33 Series of 2025 Obarangay Kalugmanan entitled a resolution endorsing the application of Mr. Wilfredo Javier for socialized industrial forest management agreement to the Office of the Sangguniang Bayan Members of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon for approval.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Ecology, Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, and Committee on Barangay Affairs.
Refer to the two committees, Environmental Protection, Laws, Rules, and Regulations, and Barangay Affairs.
Item eleven is resolution number 32 Series of 2025 Obarangay Mampayag entitled a resolution authorizing the grant of financial support from the Sangguniang Bayan to Barangay Mampayag, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon for the celebration of the twentieth round ng barangay.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Ways and Means and Committee on Barangay Affairs.
Refer to the Committee on Ways and Means and Barangay Affairs.
For the communication, item one is a letter of July 28, 2025 from the Office of the Municipal Mayor respectfully endorsing to the Sangguniang Bayan the attached contract of service by and between the local government of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon represented by Mayor Roelio N. Quinio referred to as the municipality of Manolo Fortiche and Clauden Marti Lianes referred to as the part-time trainer. This contract is in connection with the conduct of the fourth Municipal Livelihood Summit specifically for the bread and pastry production training program as part of the municipality's continuing efforts to promote sustainable livelihood opportunities. Relative to this, the undersigned is respectfully requesting the August body to authorize the undersigned to enter into the said contract anticipating with tax for your, with tax, your consideration and urgent appropriate action on this matter. Very truly yours, Roelio N. Quinio, Municipal Mayor.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Livelihood.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Livelihood.
Item two is a letter of July 29, 2025 from the Office of the Municipal Mayor but duly approved by the Honorable Roelio N. Quinio, Municipal Mayor. This is to request the Sangguniang Bayan for a resolution authorizing Honorable Roelio N. Quinio, Municipal Mayor and Ms. Suraida C. Lusada, Municipal Treasurer to open and transact with the Land Bank of the Philippines, Manolo Fortiche Branch for a new depository account for the following: L G U. Manolo Fortiche for H C I charges and to L G U. Manolo Fortiche for professional fee. All collections or receipts from the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation including but not limited to E-Consulta and PCB collections will be deposited and drawn from these respective accounts. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to your favorable response. Very truly yours, Signed Roelio, Signed Suraida C. Lusada, Municipal Treasurer and approved by the Honorable Roelio N. Quinio, Municipal Mayor.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations.
Mister Presiding Officer, ah, I would like to amend the action taken the previous subject of the letter of July 28, the contract service with Mr. Clauden Marti Lianes, part-time trainer for bread and pastry production, C O C. Ah, this must be taken as transferred item one G?
H.
H, H, one H.
Transfer to one H for item number one in the communications and item number two will be referred to the committee.
Mister Chair, also clarification on item number two. Is this the same ah, request that we tackled the last time? Kato H C I of professional fee?
Ah, the advisory from the Municipal Health Office, this would be a different ah, accounts because the land bank did not allow the use of that account that they requested. So, they say the L G U. will have to open.
A new account. Ah, since you already discussed Mister Chair, can we transfer this to one I?
Okay, transfer this to one I.
For the next is a letter of July 24, 2025 from the Municipal Budget Office submitting her read is a copy of the Sangguniang Kabataan annual budget calendar year 2024 Obarangay Lindaban and its technical review for your review and appropriate action. Please acknowledge it's a thank you. Very truly yours, Roy Lover A. Azares, Acting Municipal Budget Office.
I move to refer this on Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, Committee on Youth Development.
Refer to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations and Youth Development.
Item four is a memorandum from the Manolo Fortiche Roads and Traffic Administration the subject of which is the tricab endorsement for new applicant. Ah, endorsed is the tricab operator's applicant who has been inspected by the Manolo Fortiche Roads and Traffic Administration and is qualified to operate ply within the Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. One, Syiramay H. Puerto of Mampayag, Manolo Fortiche. Two, Marlo G. Batak of Zone Five, Lindaban, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon. And Mr. Joe Mark Ryan Basinay of Zone Three, Kalugmanan, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon. For information, signed Justado D. Incentio M. F. R. T. A. O. I. C. And say, and another memorandum endorsing the application for renewal for franchise to operate a tricab of Mr. Aaron Silico Anan of P C H. Wanda Milag and Rodel P. Salarda of Zone Four, Alae, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Transportation.
Refer to the Committee on Transportation.
Item 5 is an executive order from the Office of the Municipal Mayor, Number 40, an order reorganizing the committee, reorganizing the Manolo Forte Therapeutics Committee. And to note, the co-chair, co-chairperson for this committee is the Honorable Joy L. Cordoviz as the chairperson of the Committee on Health.
I move that this must be noted. Oh, Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition. Refer to, uh, the Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition, Mr. Presiding Officer.
To refer to the Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition.
Another, uh, for item 6 is a DILG message of June 24, 2025. The subject is the submission of the master list of qualified NMY, NMYL members.
I move that this must be noted, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So noted.
The next item is another advisory from the Department of Interior and Local Government, Bukidnon Provincial Office, the subject of which conduct of Philippine Councilors League Provincial Chapter Elections in the Province of Bukidnon. Please be advised that the Philippine Councilors League Provincial Chapter Elections in the Province of Bukidnon shall be conducted on August 15, 2025, 8:30 a.m. at Lo- Loisa's Fabillon, Malay Balay City, Bukidnon. Relative to this, Section 1 of Article 5 of the PCL Constitution and Bylaws states that all elected, appointed, and ex-official members of the local legislative councils in cities and municipalities shall automatically bec- become members of the league subject to the provisions of Article 6. In view of this, all city municipal mayors and vice mayors are hereby enjoined to allow the respective Sanggunian members to attend and participate the said election on official business. To facilitate the smooth conduct of the election, please be guided by the following details to be paid on or before the provincial chapter elections. A term membership fee of 1,200 stipulated under Article 6, Section 4A of the PCL Constitution and bylaws to be paid only once. A term dues of 6,200 stipulated under Article 6, Section 4B of the PCL Constitutions and bylaws is required for the full term. 200 pesos for the creation of valid identification card. Another is a registration fee of 5,000 to cover food, venues, seminar kits, and administrative expenses. For those who prefer to deposit their membership and registration fees, payment may be made through the following a- account. Uh, the, the bank is the Philippine National Bank at Malay Balay Branch. The account name is Philippine Councilors League. Travel expenses may be authorized and charged against local funds subject to availability and in accordance with existing accounting and auditing rules, laws, and regulations. Further, we are remind, we are also reminding us that as per Section 3 of Resolution Number 3 Series of 2025, Resolution, Resolution Adapting the PCL Election Guidelines for the Regional, Provincial, and City Chapter Elections for the term 2025 to 2028, qualified to be voted upon in any PCL elected positions are: One, must be a truly elected counselor. Two, must be a PCL member of good standing. Three, must have no financial liability. For Sanggunian members who wish to express their intent to run, kindly submit the copies of the following requirements in a secured brown envelope at the ILG Bukidnon Provincial Office, Capitol Grounds, Malay Balay City, on or before 5:00 p.m. on August 14, 2025, to wit certificate of candidacy or COC original unauthorized. Two, certificate of no financial liability original and signed by the interim provincial chapter treasurer and auditor. Your full support is hereby enjoined. Signed, Rona Pedraza Abadilla, Provincial Director.
I move that this must be noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So noted and referred to the Secretariat for Facilitation.
For the next item is a letter from the Apostolic Nunsia Ture, Manila, Philippines, dated July 19, 2025, addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor Ronaldo El Bagayas Jr., Presiding Office, Office of the Sangguni Ang Bayan, Municipality of Manolo Forte Bukidnon. With sincere appreciation, I acknowledge receipt of a copy of the Resolution Number 2025-391 by the Sangguni Ang Bayan of the Municipality of Manolo Forte Bukidnon, dated 24 April 2025, entitled, "Resolution Respectfully Commemorating the Life-Lasting Legacy and Worldwide Impact of His Holiness Pope Francis George Mario Bergoli, Supreme Fontip of the Roman Catholic Church and the 266th successor to Saint Peter. On behalf of the Holy See, I convey my heartfelt gratitude and blessing to the Sangguni Ang Bayan and the entire Municipality of Manolo Forte Bukidnon for your sincere condolences and prayers to the repose of His Holiness Pope Francis. Your tribute honors his enduring legacy as Shepherd of Christ Church. We pray he now beholds the Lord face to face and hears his voice of welcome in the land of the living, the life of the world to come. With kind regards and prayerful best wishes, I remain, sincerely yours in Christ, Signed, Charles G. Brown, Apostolic Nunsia."
I move that this must be noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So noted.
Item 9 is the accreditation application of the United Farmer Sector Association of Manolo Forte Bukidnon.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Cooperative. Uh, transfer this to the Committee on, uh, item...
J, IJ.
1J.
Transfer to item 1J.
The, for the addendum, we have three addendums. Item 1 is a letter of June 4, 2025 from the Office of the Municipal Mayor. This is to formally request the Sangguni Ang Bayan of this municipality for the approval of realignment amounting to 602,860 pesos from various portions of appropriations to be made available as an additional appropriation for various of the said office and program. Please see attached documents for your reference. Very truly yours, Roelio N. Kinyo, Municipal Mayor. And attached to this is the signed certification from the local finance committee for the availability of funds.
Will refer this or will transfer this item? Is it certified urgent?
Uh, refer this to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation.
Can actually transfer this, uh, since this is certified urgent?
Is this urgent? Mr. Presiding. Okay, um, I move to transfer this as item 1H.
K.
K?
Item 1K.
Uh, 1K.
Item 2 for the addendum is proposed resolution number 2025-121BP of the Sangguni Ang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating the Honorable Mayor Roelio N. Kinyo and the Local Government of Manolo Forte for being a special awardee for the unwavering support to the Bureau of Jail and Management Penology Region 10 given on July 30, 2025 in Cove Garden, Kagayan de Oro City, authored by the Honorable Akel Abalas Bayakad."
I move to transfer this as item 1L.
L, transfer to item 1L.
The last item for the addendum is proposed ordinance, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-122BP of the Sangguni Ang Bayan entitled, "A Resolution Congratulating Mr. Jonathan Mereda, a resident of Alaie, Manolo Forte Bukidnon, for graduating com laude in the 88 commencement exercises of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, held on July 30, 2025 at the atrium Limket Kai Center, Kagayan de Oro City, authored by the Honorable Rena Ito Tiquin."
I move to transfer this as item 1M.
Transfer to item 1M.
Um, Mr. Presiding Officer, um, there's a hong-hong of Cons. Eddie de Gunlay that in the item 4 of the communication letter, uh, this must be transferred instead of referred the renewal of Aaron Licwanan and Rodel Salarda. This must be transferred as item 1N.
Transfer to, uh, the item number 4 of the communications should be transferred to item 1N. Only the renewal or the new application?
Only the renewal.
Only the renewal, okay.
Now we are in the, the committee report for the committee of the whole, uh... May I call our honorable Mary Jane Gilian? The Committee on barangay affairs, Sangguni.
Barangay affairs. I think this is in Committee on Laws.
Hi, this is a committee of the whole, no? Can we call, uh, Consihal Tata Liparto? Committee on Laws, Rules, Regulation.
Honorable Liparto.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. For Committee Report Number 2025-015B to the Committee of the Whole to which was referred, subject, Letter of July 16, signed by the Punong Barangay of the Milag, informing the Sanggunian on the proposed renovation improvement of St. Jude Thadeos Parish Church at the Milag, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon for comments as to its adherence to barangay road clearing activity. Invited guest to shed light for the subject matter was Engineer Bernabe Oxtero from the Office of the Building Official. Salient points that transpired during the committee hearing were as follows: That the proposed improvement of the church, extending its back portion was to provide solution with the overcrowding problem in the area. The renovation would be to construct the second floor of the existing building thus traversing a barangay road flyover. Honorable J. S. Albaresi then clarified that under the relevant laws, the barangay has the full authority with regards to the matter since it is a barangay road and it is within the jurisdiction of the barangay, including the airspace of the area. Engineer Oxtero said that the project is permitted on the condition that the structural analysis would be complied since it, it is a two-story building and other relevant laws and regulations like setback requirements per approved catastrophic survey. The following recommendations were then considered. Honorable Albaresi suggested to pass a resolution informing the, the concerned barangay of their full authority over the area subject to the compliance of the requirements of the Building Code and other relevant laws. To inform the barangay to disseminate the information of the homeowners affected, and they will comply with the law as stipulated in the Building Code. Additionally, a formal consultation of the residents should be made to request the municipal engineering office to conduct catastrophic survey to determine the exact area size in terms of width and height and location of the road. Additionally, a design for concreting should be presented. Final recommendation and demotion of the members present, Julie Secanded, and the appropriate action as recommended relative to the proposed renovation improvement of St. Jude, St. Jude Thadeos Parish Church, the Milag, Manolo Forte Bukidnon, was approved in the committee level. Hence, the proposed solutions, resolutions be passed. It is attested by all the committee members present, Mr. Presiding Officer. So with this, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of Committee Report Number 2025-015B in regards to the request of the Punong Barangay informing the Sanggunian to the, on the proposed renovation or improvement of the St. Jude Thadeos Parish Church at the Milag, Manolo Forte Bukidnon. Any second? Any comments? Dear Beignan, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Liparto.
For the committee report, item number 2, a joint committee on health, sanitation, and nutrition, and committee on laws, rules, and regulation. May I call the honorable Florame Pinaso, the author?
This is under the committee on health?
Under the committee on health, I'm sorry. Um, Honorable Joy Lepisores Cordoviz.
Honorable Cordoviz.
Thank you, Honorable Rena Kinyo. For this, Your Honor, I think the proponent is the Honorable Florame Pinaso.
What's the pleasure of the proponent?
Is it okay?
Yes. Because this, uh, the Honorable Pinaso, which is the proponent, is not a member of the committee on health.
Ah, okay.
So the committee on health should.
Uh, yes, Your Honor.
Sponsor.
So, it is my honor to sponsor this committee report. Um, the joint committee report number 2025-01016B, Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition, Committee on Laws, Rules and Regulations. Honorable Sangguni Ang Bayan, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon, ladies and gentlemen, the joint committee on health, sanitation, and nutrition, and committee on laws, rules, and regulation to which was referred. The subject is a proposed ordinance of the Sangguni Ang Bayan entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing the Local Rabies Prevention and Control Program in the Municipality of Manolo Forte Bukidnon and for Other Purposes", authored by the Honorable Florame D. Pinaso, co-authored by the Honorable Elsiver Ada Gunlay, Honorable Joy L. Cordoviz, Honorable Attorney J. Albaresi, Honorable Rena Ito Tiquin, and Honorable Kristi Liparto Salabi. Honorable Florame D. Pinaso, the author, presented the ordinance. Invited as resource speakers were Dr. Richard Iduetes, the municipal Adamao veterinarian, and Ms. Katrina Bitilap, the municipal public health nurse. Salient points and relevant information regarding rabies transpired. The rabies is 100% preventable, but also 100% fatality, or has 100% fatality. Meaning if you have not acquired rabies, then it is 100% preventable. However, I mean, if you have not acquired rabies, then it is 100% preventable. However, if you have acquired rabies, fatality is also ta- uh, is also time high at 100%. That prudence are not carriers of rabies. That animal vaccination is done yearly with three sessions in between. That vaccination for puppies is already allowed for at least three months after birth. That if a person is bitten by a pet stray animal, it should not wait, it should not wait three to 10 days before getting vaccination and should proceed to the animal bite center to be vaccinated immediately. The person will then be observed for manifestations of behavioral changes, while the animal will be observed for sudden death indicating presence of transmission of rabies to the beaten individual. That a tetanus shot is also admin- administered alongside rabies vaccine to prevent tetanus. Tetanus is a bacterial infection caused by Clostridium tetany, a spore entering through the wounds. That the animal bite center does not treat poison. So, whenever bitten by a snake, the person must proceed to the Poison Control Center of Northern Mindanao Medical Center and not to the animal bite center. That animal bite- That animal bite center only caters Manolo Fortis residents. Non-Manolo Fortis residents shall be referred to the Provincial Hospital. That animal bite center identifies all dogs that are not leashed or stray regardless of the animal has an owner or not. If it is not leashed, then it is identified as pet. In the absence of a leash, a dog tag will suffice as long as the pet, pet is in the owner's residence. That in Section Eighteen D, failure to leash dogs in public, um, pet owners who fail to leash their dogs when outside the home shall be fined five hundred pesos. The owner shall not be given consideration even if the dog got lost from its leash accidentally, especially in public places. In cases where the dog causes injuries, the accidentally, uh, causes injuries, the accident accidentally, especially in public places, in cases where the dog causes injuries, the owner is at fault for failing to secure the dog. That in Section Fifteen, Adoption of Unclaimed Dogs, if a person wishes to adopt an impounded dog, the adoption shall require a barangay agreement between the prospective adopters and the barangay through an orientation. That in Section Sixteen E, if a dog overstays at the pound, it can be considered as grounds for euthanasia. That euthanasia only includes through injection and not through other acts such as electrocution or suffocation. That euthanasia is less expensive than spaying since spaying uses sutures that usually cost more than thousand a thousand each. That in Section Seven I, collect and return used, uh, anti-rabies vaccine vials to the provincial coordinator of the provincial veterinary office for proper monitoring and accountability shall only apply if the vials are provided by the provincial veterinary office, otherwise it is not necessary. That Section Eighteen F, those who fa- uh, who will adopt the dogs for consumption shall be penalized with a fine of two thousand five hundred pesos per animal. That in some cultures, dog meat consumption is allowed, however, such act is not cultural practice in the municipality of Manolo Fortis making the act penal, uh, pen- penal, uh, penalizable. That there is still no Manolo Fortis Animal Welfare Council, only Manolo Fortis Animal Welfare Committee. That the barangay animal health workers shall be prioritized in rabies and tetanus vaccination. The following recommendations were then considered: To create a different ordinance focusing on a microchip insertion on pet animals in the municipality. For the reason of convenience and monitoring tracing and owner liability. To pass the ordinance in establishing the municipal veterinary office as one of, as one consideration. To create another ordinance that limits the pet ownership per, uh, capability. To replace dogs with pets. To not limit the scope to dogs but also to cats. To rephrase the wordings in the penalty, penalties. To include the term euthanasia in Section Four, General Terms Defined. To change municipal veterinary office to municipal agriculture office through the livestock division since the municipal veterinary office has not yet been established. To provide data on the distribution of a demographic and clinical characteristics of beaten people and data on the distribution of animal bitten cases by animal type in the municipality of Manolo Fortis. This is to emphasize the importance of registering pets and establishing, uh, the status of rabies infection and vaccination in the municipality for monitoring and evaluation purposes. Final recommendation, on motion of the Honorable Flora Mae D. Pinaso and unanimously seconded by the members present, the present, uh, the proposed ordinance of the Sangunian Bayan entitled an ordinance establishing the local rabies prevention and control program in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon and for other purposes was approved at the committee level subject to amendments and proper styling. This is attested by the committee members present, the Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition, and the Committee on Laws and Regulations. So I move, Your Honor, for the approval of this committee reports.
So there's a motion for the approval of Joint Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero-one-six B in regards to the ordinance establishing the local rabies prevention and control program in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon and for other purposes. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? Honorable Ignan, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
For the Committee Report, item three is the Joint Committee on Infrastructure and Committee on Barangay Affairs. Um, may I call on the Vice Chairman of Infrastructure, uh, Cons. Eddie Dagunlay?
Honorable Dagunlay?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero-one-seven B. The Committee of the Whole. Subject Resolution Number Zero Forty-three Series of Twenty Twenty-Five barangay mambatangan entitled, uh, Resolution Authorizing the Demolition of Old Barangay Hall for the Construction of New One Unit of Two-Tory Multipurpose Administrative Building Amounting to Ten Million Pesos. Invited guest to shed light for the subject matter was Engineer Abril G. Ison, representative, representative from the Multi-Municipal Engineering Office. Salient points that, uh, transpired during the committee hearing were as follows: Honorable J. S. Albaresi led that for demolition for the legal an ordinance should be made not just a resolution from the barangay. Honorable Mary Jane Gilayan then shared her insights that the barangay should acquire KUA certification in compliance for the requirements before demolition. Engineer Ison commented that the approved approval from the Sangunian is one of the requirements of the KUA prior to the demolition. Engineer Ison also noted that the project was already bidet. However, the notice to proceed was still not issued. The following recommendation was then considered: To review the checklist for the demolition and if there is a necessary for the subject resolution, be an or, an ordinance. Final recommendation, on motion of the Honorable Alex Di Payanga and Julie seconded by all members present, the Resolution Number Zero Forty-three Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of barangay mambat- mambatangan entitled, uh, Resolution Authorizing the demolition of old barangay hall for the construction of new one unit two-story multipurpose administrative building amounting to ten million pesos was approved in committee label, committee level. Subject clarification on the requirement stated in the checklist. So, Mr. Chair, uh, this is clarified and discussed during the committee hearing. So I move this, uh, ordinance, uh, Resolution Number Zero Forty-three Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of barangay mambatangan entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Demolition of Old Barangay Hall for the Construction of New One Two-Tory Multipurpose Administrative Building Amounting to Ten Million, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the Joint Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero-one-seven B in regards to the Resolution Authorizing the demolition of the old barangay hall for the construction of a new two-story multipurpose administrative building amounting to ten million pesos. Any second? Any comments? Honorable Ignan, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Dagunlay.
For Committee Report, item number four, a joint committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Committee on Laws, Rules and Regulations. May I call on the, uh, the Chairman of the Indigenous Cultural Communities, Honorable Alex Di Payanga.
Honorable Payala? Yes, Mrs. Chairman? Thank you, Honorable Rena Quinho, our Majority Floor Leader. This is a Joint Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero-one-eight B. The Joint Committee, Committee on Indigenous Cultural Committees and Committee on Laws, Rules and Regulations to which was referred, the subject, the pro- the proposed ordinance of the Sangunian Bayan entitled an ordinance prescribing guidelines for the respectful use of ethnic attire and accessories in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon and imposing penalties for violation thereof. Authored by yours truly, the Honorable Alex Di Payanga Committee Chairman on Indigenous Cultural Committees presented the subject ordinance in the, with the invited resource person, Mr. Arrianta Libong IP Stop. The silent point transpired were as follows: That there are three existing tribes in the municipality, namely Talandig, Higaonon, and Bukidnon. The ordinance established guidelines for the respectful use of ethnic attire and accessories within the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon to foretake the culture integrity of indigenous peoples in this municipality of Manolo Fortis. Specifically, the Talandig and Higaonon communities and Bukidnon. Ethnic attire and accessories must be worn in appropriate context such as cultural events, education, educational activities, ceremonial seating, or official representation of IP identity. Use of attire for esti- aesthetic, entertainment, or commercial purposes without cultural understanding is considered disrespectful. Prior consent from the indigenous peoples IP community should be observed for wearing ethnic attire on the following: Tourism, vegan, ethnic-inspired attire, commercial use as fashion shoe, merchandising. Ritual are often necessary before wearing ethnic attire for the wearing safety and ensure clarity of purpose. Ethnic attire should not be above the knee length as modesty is a value held by the tribes. Even full-blooded IP members cannot show or wear attire that is short in length. Ethnic attire or accessories must not be altered in ways that distort or disrespect their cultural meaning. Any modification compromising traditional design symbolism or intended purpose, purpose is strictly prohibited. The following recommendation were then considered: Inclusion of pattern illustration meaning inappropriate length in the ordinance was proposed for educational purposes. Suggestions were made to apply patents, copyright to tribal pattern and ritual to protect IP right. Final recommendation, on the motion of Honorable Alex Di Payanga duly seconded by the members present, the purpose ordinance, the proposed ordinance of the Sangunian Bayan entitled an ordinance prescribing guidelines for the respectful use of ethnic attire and accessories in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon and imposing penalties for violation thereof was approved at the committee level subject to additional, to the additions. With this, Mr. Chairman, as presented to this august body, I move, Mr. Chairman, for the approval of this committee report.
So there's a motion for the approval of the Joint Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero-one-eight B regarding the ordinance prescribing guidelines for the respectful use of ethnic attire and accessories in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon and imposing penalties for violations thereof. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? The Honorable Sala- Lipar-
Uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, I would like also to ask the author of the ordinance, is the ethnic-inspired covered with this ordinance? Like other, we have other talented designers. Uh, they just used a piece of the design and put it as a inspired design, something like that. Is it covered?
Yes, uh, actually, it was being read a while ago that what is covered is including the ethnic-inspired. It was also being discussed during the committee hearing that the talented fashion designers cannot alter any parts of the attire because the purpose of the ordinance is to preserve the
Including the color?
Uniform or the costume or the attire.
Okay, noted, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Any further comments? Honorable Ignan, the motion is now approved. Thank you, Honorable Payanga.
For the Committee Report, item number five, is the Joint Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition, Committee on Laws, Rules and Regulation, and Committee on Barangay Affairs. May I call on Honorable Joy Cordobes?
Honorable Cordobes?
Uh, the Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero-one-nine B. Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition, Committee on Laws and Regulations, Committee on Barangay Affairs. The Honorable Sangunian Bayan, Manolo Fortis Bukidnon, ladies and gentlemen. The Joint Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition Committee, uh, Committee on Laws, Rules and Regulations and Committee on Barangay Affairs to which was referred. The subject is the Barangay Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero-zero-two of barangay Santo Nino entitled, Requiring All Households of barangay Santo Nino, Manolo Fortis Bukidnon, to engage backyard gardening to improve health sustainability in the community. Yours truly, Committee Chairman on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition, presented the findings and review of the subject ordinance. That the subject ordinance is known as Gulayan Sa Barangay which aims to strengthen the capacity of the barangay towards sustainable agriculture initiatives through promoting every household to plant and grow vegetables and root crops in their respective backyards. Moreover, the barangay will establish a committee garden in identified vacant areas for more vegetable and root crop production. The committee found that the subject ordinance provides a penalty of community service which is beyond the authority of the barangay council to impose. For final recommendation, on motion of the Honorable Joy Cordobes, DMD- on motion of the Honorable Joy Cordoviz, DMD, and unanimously seconded by all the members present, the Barangay Ordinance Number 2025-002 of Barangay Santo Nino, entitled, Requiring All Households of Barangay Santo Nino, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, to engage backyard gardening to empower health sustainability in the community, would be returned to its point of origin for amendment, particularly Section 5, penalty clause, deleting the imposition of community service for the purpose. So I move, Your Honor, for the approval of this committee, joint committee report.
So there's a motion for the approval of the joint committee report number 2025-019B regarding the Barangay Ordinance Number 2025-002 of Barangay Santo Nino be returned back to the point of origin for amendments. Any second?
A second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Honorable Cordoviz.
We are now in the business of the day for the second reading. May I call on Honorable Kristi Lepardo Salabet.
For second reading, Madam Sekatari.
For second reading, item one, proposed ordinance number 2025-2032 of the Sanggunian Bayan entitled, An Ordinance Amending Sections 3, 18, 21, and 23 of Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-2096, entitled, The Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of 2024, authored by the Honorable Kristi Lepardo Salabet.
Um, I move to approve for the second reading of the ordinance number 2025-2032 of the Sanggunian Bayan entitled, An Ordinance Amending Sections 3, 18, 21, and 23 of the Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-2096, entitled, The Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of 2024, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval on second reading, the ordinance amending Sections 3, 18, 21, and 23 of the Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-2096, entitled, The Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of 2024. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Lepardo.
Item two for second reading is proposed ordinance number 2025-2033 of the Sanggunian Bayan entitled, An Ordinance Institutionalizing the Manolo Fortiche Experience, a Sustainable Tourism Program, Promoting Indigenous Culture and Ecological Preservation, Providing Funds and for Other Purposes, authored by the Honorable Rena Kinyo and co-authored by the Honorable Alex Di Payanga.
May I request the Honorable, uh, the co-author of this ordinance, Honorable Alex Di Payanga.
Honorable Payanga.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. An ordinance institutionalizing the Manolo Fortiche Experience, a Sustainable Tourism Program, promoting indigenous culture and ecological preservation, providing funds for the, for other purposes. Mr. Chairman, there is a additional section of the proposed ordinance uh, during the uh, presentation of this ordinance on first reading, Mr. Chair. So I would like to read the other section, Mr. Chairman. For the Section 3, The Manolo Fortiche Experience, a holistic and sustainable tourism program designed to showcase the municipality's unique cultural, ecological, and community-based assets. Its integrated ecotours, cultural immersion, and homesties, providing visitors with an authentic and meaningful encounter with the natural environment indigenous heritage and local way of life in Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. This experience shall include, but not limited to, ecotours, guide tours, and activities that highlight the municipality's rich biodiversity, scenic landscapes, and protected areas such as water pools, mountains, caves, and agroecological farms, promoting environmental awareness and conservation. Number two is the cultural immersion, interaction experience that allow visitors to engage with the indigenous peoples, Higaonon communities, learn about their customs, arts, crafts, language, and spiritual beliefs, and participated in cultural events and traditional practices. Community-based homesties, accommodation programs hosted by local families, particularly from indigenous and rural communities, enabling visitors to experience authentic local hospitality, causing daily routines and traditions. Mr. Chair, that is an insertion of this ordinance during the committee hearing, Mr. Chairman. With this, Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of this ordinance for the second reading, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed ordinance number 2025-2033 on second reading, the ordinance institutionalizing the Manolo Fortiche Experience, a Sustainable Tourism Program, promoting indigenous culture and ecological preservation, providing funds and for other purposes. Any second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For third reading, item one is proposed ordinance number 2025-2229 of the Sanggunian Bayan entitled, An Ordinance Regulating the Establishment, Operation, and Maintenance of Funeral Parlors in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, authored by the Honorable Miguel de Di Manta.
So, the proposed ordinance number 2025-2229 of the Sanggunian Bayan, those who are in favor for the approval of its on third reading, the ordinance regulating the establishment, operation, and maintenance of funeral parlors in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. How about the Honorable Albaresi?
On the phone, Pa.
How will we treat that one? It's
Majority?
Eleven.
Out of?
Eleven voted yes, and one no vote abstained? Or we will wait for the Honorable Albaresi? Pero, what is the vote of the one? Can I make one? Huh? Because he is present in the roll call, he should have a vote. It's either yes, no, or abstained. The Honorable Albaresi, since you are present, we need your vote on the proposed ordinance of the Honorable Di Manta. Um, ten is saying yes.
I am casting my vote in favor of the ordinance, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have eleven out of eleven, so the motion, also the proposed ordinance number 2025-2229, an ordinance regulating the establishment, operation, and maintenance of funeral parlors in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, is now approved on third and final reading.
For item two, third reading, proposed ordinance number 2025-2230 of the Sanggunian Bayan entitled, An Ordinance Institutionalizing the Provision of Nutritious Meals and Snacks in All Activities Organized by the Local Government Unit of Manolo Fortiche, authored by the Honorable Joy El Cordoviz.
Be careful with your votes on this one, this is the final. Those who are in favor for the approval on third and final reading, the ordinance institutionalizing the provision of nutritious meals and snacks in all activities organized by the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche, please raise your right hand. Those who are in favor. So, eleven out of eleven, final answer? Before I bang the cable, final answer, eleven out of eleven. So, the proposed ordinance number 2025-2230 entitled, An Ordinance Institutionalizing the Provision of Nutritious Meals and Snacks in All Activities Organized by the Local Government Unit of Manolo Fortiche, voted by all Sanggunian Bayan members, is now approved on third and final reading.
Um, Mr. Presiding Officer, uh, since this is passed, can we can we ask for the recommendation of our MNOW whenever we have an event or a menu? A prescribed menu for a healthy, uh, menu for our event?
Uh, yes.
Actually, this was stipulated in the ordinance, right?
Actually, she is preparing now, Your Honor, and thank you so much for your support, Sangning Ordinanza, this is so timely, since today is the culmination of our nutrition month. So, nakapasa gitaw legislation, now we are after of the health of our employees, and I hope ma adapt nisa koma Manolo Fortiche. Thank you so much for your support.
Can we also approve the menu set by the? Thank you. Let's proceed.
Item three, third reading, proposed ordinance number 2025-2231 of the Sanggunian Bayan entitled, An Ordinance Enhancing the Registration, Accreditation, and Support System for Barangay Health Workers in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche and for other purposes, authored by the Honorable Joy El Cordoviz and co-authored by the Honorable Mary Jane Pigilayan.
So for those who are in favor for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2025-2231, the ordinance enhancing the registration, accreditation, and support system for barangay health workers in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon and for other purposes, please raise your right hand. So eleven out of eleven, so the proposed ordinance enhancing the registration, accreditation, and support system for barangay health workers in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon and for other purposes is now approved on third and final reading.
Now we are now on our transferred items. For item one A, item one B, and item one C, authored by yours truly. May I read the the proposed resolution, Mr. Chair? And Mr. Presiding Officer. For transferred item one A is a resolution congratulating Miss Jasha Maxindal, a resident of Agusan Canyon, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, for graduating cum laude in the 71st commencement exercise of Central Mindanao University College of Nursing held on July 25, 2025, at the CMU Convention Center. Whereas academic excellence is a milestone worthy of recognition, and it is fitting to commend individuals who bring pride and honor to the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche through their accomplishments. Whereas, Miss Jasha Maxindal, an upstanding resident of Agusan Canyon, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, successfully graduated cum laude from the College of Nursing at Central Mindanao University during its 71st commencement exercise held on July 25, 2025, at the CMU Convention Center. Whereas, Miss Dal's dedication, perseverance, and excellence in the academics reflect the values of diligence and commitment that the youth of Manolo Fortiche strive to emulate. Whereas, she is the daughter of the proud parents Rosali Magadandal and Maximodal, whose support and guidance have contributed significantly to her success. Whereas, her outstanding achievement brings pride not only to her family and community, but also to the entire municipality of Manolo Fortiche, and it exemplifies the potential and capability of its citizens to excel in the field of education. Whereas, the Sanggunian Bayan of Manolo Fortiche deems to proper deems it proper to extend its warmest congratulation and commendation to Miss Jasha Maxindal for the exemplary academic accomplishment as a model of inspiration to the youth. Now therefore, be it resolved, as it hereby resolved, to congratulate Miss Jasha Marie Dal of Agusan Canyon, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, for graduating cum laude in the 71st commencement exercise of Central Mindanao University College of Nursing held on July 25, 2025, at the CMU Convention Center. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Miss Jasha Marie Dal, Maxindal, and her family as a token of the municipality's recognition and pride in her achievement. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the municipal mayor, Mayor Helio, and Kinyo for his information and reference. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this proposed resolution number 2025-114 uh, B?
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution, congratulating Miss Jasha Maxindal, a resident of Barangay, Agusan Canyon, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, for graduating cum laude in the 71st commencement exercise of Central Mindanao University College of Nursing held on July 25, 2025, at the CMU Convention Center. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
For transferred item one B, this is from the, this is a proposed resolution, congratulating and commending the LB Pickleball Club Team and all of Fortiche for winning championships in various categories during the Ayala Mall's Pickle Mall Pickleball Tournament Championship Season 3 held from July 26 to 27 at Ayala Mall's Vermosa Imus Cavite. Whereas, the Ayala Mall's Pickle Mall Pickleball Tournament Season 3 officially launched on May 24, 2025, at One Ayala Mall in Makati City, featuring over 400 teams and 800 players across nine major ayala malls nationwide, including One Ayala Trinoma, Vertes North, Makati, Market Market, Fairview, Teresa's, Mark Mall, Capital Central, Abresa, and Centrio Mall. Whereas, the LB Pickle Club Team, Manolo Fortiche, representing the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, proudly competed in the championship tournament held at Ayala Mall's Vermosa Imus Cavite. Whereas, the following members of the team emerged victorious in their respective divisions, bringing pride and honor not only to their club, but to the entire municipality of Manolo Fortiche. Justin Balcos and Marvin J. Cadaves held as champion for the men's novice category. For Marvin J. Cadaves and Ethel Ginimata, uh, they are also champion of the mixed novice category. Jasper Villamore and Raj Jaggarigama, champion also, men's intermediate category. And whereas this outstanding achievement is a testament to the dedication, discipline, and sportmanship of the LB Pickleball Club Team, Manolo Forte, and further reflects the growing passion of pickleball in Bukidnon, where local tournaments and grassroots promotions of the sports have flourished in recent years. Whereas such triumphs not only elevate the name of Manolo Forte in the field of sports, but also inspire the youth and community members to engage in healthy, active, and competitive lifestyles. Whereas the Sangguni Angbayan of Manolo Forte deems to proper extend its warmest congratulations and commendation to LB Pickleball Club Team, Manolo Forte, for their exemplary sportmanship and as a models of inspiration to the athletes of Manolo Forte. Be it resolved, as it hereby resolved, by the Sangguni Angbayan of Manolo Forte in session assembled, to congratulate and commend the LB Pickleball Club Team, Manolo Forte, for their exemplary performance and championship victories during the Ayala Mall's Pickle Mall Pickleball Tournament Season 3, held from July 26 to July 27, 2025. Resolve further that a copies of this resolution be furnished to the LB Pickleball Club Team, Manolo Forte, the families of the champions, and Municipal Mayor, Honorable Roelio and Kinyo for their information and appropriate recognition. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this resolution, congratulating and commending the LB Pickleball Club Team, Manolo Forte, for winning champion in various categories during the Ayala Mall's Pickle Mall Pickleball Tournament, held from July 26 to 27 at Ayala Mall's Vermosa Imus Cavite.
So, there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution, congratulating and commending the LB Pickleball Club Team, Manolo Forte, for winning championships in various categories during the Ayala Mall's Pickle Mall Pickleball Tournament Championship Season 3, held from July 26 to 27, 2025, at Ayala Mall's Vermosa Imus Cavite. Any second? Seconded, any comments? Siya pasabot si LB? Louis Biton?
Muna ilang kuwan, um, ngalan na siya sa ilang coach, Mr. Chair.
Any, any comments? Herr Bignan, the motion is approved.
For transferred item 1C, a proposed resolution expressing deep sympathy and profound condolence on the untimely demise of Mr. Alejandro Nog Butong Arinal, local youth development officer of LGU Manolo Forte, and honoring his life, dedication, and contribution to the youth and community development of Manolo Forte and province of Bukidnon. Whereas it is with profound sorrow and deep sense of loss that the Municipality of Manolo Forte received the heartbreaking news of the untimely passing of Mr. Alejandro Nog Arinal, the municipal local youth development officer, a distinguished public servant, a passionate youth advocate, and a shining example of servant leadership. Whereas Alejandro B. Arinal was born on the 10th day of October 1994 in Cagandi Oro City, and was raised in the vibrant and close-knit community of the Milag, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. From the tender age, he exhibited remarkable intellect and a strong sense of civic responsibility, as reflected in his active involvement in school-based organizations and various youth and community-centered initiatives. Whereas, committed to the pursuit of academic and personal excellence, he earned his Bachelor of Science in Mathematics from Central Mindanao University, and subsequently obtained his Master's Degree in Public Administration from Xavier University, Ateneo de Cagayan, both of which serve as a strong foundation of his career in public service. Whereas his natural inclination toward leadership and service was exemplified during his tenure as Sangguni Angkabataan Chairperson of Barangay da Milag from 2018 to 2023, during which he consistently advanced youth participation in governance and community development. He later continued his advocacy as coordinator of Buka, Manolo Forte, from 2023 to 2025, championing youth empowerment, inclusivity, and equity across gender socioeconomic status and background. Whereas, as the municipal local youth development officer, Mr. Arinal brought distinction and honor to the Municipality of Manolo Forte through his exemplary performance and tireless work ethic. His commitment led to the Municipality earning recognition from the provincial government of Bukidnon and the National Youth Commission, notably for the timely submission of monitoring and evaluation reports, and for achieving 100% registration rate of Sangguni Angkabataan officials in the SK web portal, thereby positioning Manolo Forte among the top five municipalities nationwide. Whereas Sir Nog's unwavering dedication to public service, his genuine passion for uplifting the youth, and his steadfast commitment to integrity, transparency, and excellence have left a legacy that will continue to inspire not only in the Municipality of Manolo Forte, but throughout the entire province of Bukidnon. Whereas the passing of Mr. Alejandro Nog Arinal is a tremendous loss to his beloved family, friends, colleagues in government service, and most especially to the youth sector, whose lives he touched and transformed through his compassionate leadership and visionary efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved, as it hereby resolved, by the Sangguni Angbayan of Manolo Forte, in session Julie assembled, to express the deepest sympathy and heartfelt condolences to the bereaved family of Mr. Alejandro Nog Butong Arinal, to honor and celebrate his life, legacy, and invaluable contribution to youth leadership, public service, and advocacy for equality, and to commend posthumously Mr. Alejandro B. Arinal for his exemplary service and commitment to the municipality and the youth sector, whose life serves as an inspiration to future generations. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the family of the late Mr. Alejandro Arinal. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this proposed resolution number 2025-116BP.
So, there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution expressing deep sympathy to the family on the untimely demise of Mr. Alejandro Nog Butong Arinal, local youth development officer of LGU Manolo Forte, and honoring his life, dedication, and contribution to the youth and community development of Manolo Forte and the province of Bukidnon. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? Herr Bignan, the motion is approved.
Now, we are in item number six, may we call on Honorable Miguel D. Dimata?
Transferred item 1D and E, Honorable Dimata.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and thank you, Madam Majority Leader. For transferred item 1D, Mr. Presiding Officer, is the proposed resolution number 2025-117B-P, entitled "A Resolution Commending Ms. Maria Carmelita G. Agbalog for Her Exemplary Performance in Securing Second Place in the Recently Concluded 2025 Likhang Kababaikan Business Plan Competition at the Department of Migrant Workers," held on June 25, 2025, at the Department of Migrant Workers National Capital Region Office, Makati City. This is authored by yours truly. Whereas the 2025 Likhang Kababaikan Business Plan Competition with the theme "Linangin ang kakayahan sa kabuhayan" is a national initiative under the Department of Migrant Workers National Reintegration Network, aimed at empowering returning overseas Filipino workers, OFWs, particularly women, by supporting their pursuit of sustainable and self-reliant livelihood opportunities. Whereas Ms. Maria Carmelita G. Agbalog, a resident of Barangay Mampayag, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon, and a former domestic worker-turned-intrapreneur, was recognized for her outstanding agricultural-based business plan focused on rabbit and chicken farming, securing second place in the said competition. Whereas Ms. Maria Carmelita G. Agbalog exemplifies strength, resilience, and entrepreneurial spirit. Her success story is a testament to the transformative impact of the empowerment and reintegration programs for OFWs. She serves as an inspiration to other women, encouraging them to pursue entrepreneurial ventures upon their return to the Philippines. Whereas the local government unit of Manolo Forte fully supports and recognizes the remarkable accomplishments of its constituents, particularly those who bring pride to the Municipality and contribute to the local development progress and progress. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded, be it resolved, as it is hereby resolved, by the 21st Sangguni Angbayan of Manolo Forte, Bukidnon, to commend Ms. Maria Carmelita G. Agbalog for her exemplary performance in securing second place in the 25 Likhang Kababaikan Business Plan Competition organized by the Department of Migrant Workers. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Ms. Maria Carmelita G. Agbalog as a token of recognition and appreciation for her achievement. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the municipal mayor, Helio and Kinyo, for his information and reference. Mr. Chair, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this proposed resolution number 2025-117B-P, entitled "A Resolution Commending Ms. Maria Carmelita G. Agbalog for Her Exemplary Performance in Securing Second Place in the Recently Concluded 2025 Likhang Kababaikan Business Plan Competition at the Department of Migrant Workers," on June 25, 2025, at the Department of Migrant Workers National Capital Region Region Office, Makati City. I so move for its approval, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There's a motion for the approval of a resolution commending Ms. Maria Carmelita G. Agbalog for her exemplary performance in securing second place in the recently concluded 2025 Likhang Kababaikan Business Plan Competition of the Department of Migrant Workers, held on June 25, 2025, at the Department of Migrant Workers National Capital Region Office, Makati City. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? Herr Bignan, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. For transferred item 1E, is the proposed resolution number 2025-118B-P, entitled "A Resolution Earnestly Requesting the Honorable Jose Manuel F. Alba, Representative of the First District of Bukidnon, to Allocate Funds for the Construction of Estates, Installation of Electrical Connections, and the Provision of Bleachers at the Covered Court of Da Milag Integrated School, Barangay da Milag, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon." This is again authored by yours truly. Whereas the Da Milag Integrated School serves as a central educational institution of Barangay da Milag, accommodating a growing number of students and regularly hosting school and community activities. Whereas the existing Covered Court of Da Milag Integrated School, though functional, lacks essential infrastructure such as proper states, adequate electrical connections, and sufficient bleachers sitting to effectively support these activities. Whereas the proposed improvements will significantly enhance the school's capacity to host educational, cultural, and athletic events in a safe and conducive environment. Whereas the local government unit of Manolo Forte remains committed to supporting educational development and community engagement through infrastructure support and partnership with higher government offices. Whereas, under Section 17F of the 1991 Local Government Code, the national government or the next higher level of the local government may provide or augment the basic services and facilities assigned to the lower-level local government units with such services when such services or facilities are not available or are inadequate to meet the needs of its constituents. Whereas the Honorable Jose Manuel F. Alba, Representative of the First District of Bukidnon, is recognized for his consistent support of education and infrastructure development initiatives across the district. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded, be it resolved, as it is hereby resolved, by the 21st Sangguni Angbayan of Manolo Forte, Bukidnon, to earnestly request the Honorable Jose Manuel F. Alba, Representative of the First District of Bukidnon, to allocate funds for the construction of estates, installations of electrical connections, and provisions of bleachers at the Covered Court of Da Milag Integrated School, Barangay da Milag, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. Resolve further that the cap- Office of the Honorable Congressman Jose Manuel F. Alba for his information and favorable consideration. So with this, Mr. President, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this proposed resolution entitled "A Resolution Earnestly Requesting the Honorable Jose Manuel F. Alba, Representative of the First District of Bukidnon, to Allocate Funds for the Construction of Estates, Installation of Electrical Connections, and the Provision of Bleachers at the Covered Court of Da Milag Integrated School, Barangay da Milag, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon." I so move for its approval, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So, there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Jose Manuel F. Alba, Representative of the First District of Bukidnon, to allocate funds for the construction of a stage, installation of electrical connections, and the provision of bleachers at the Covered Court of Da Milag Integrated School, Barangay da Milag, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? Herr Bignan, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Dimata.
For transferred item 1F, may we call on Honorable Presti Leparto Salabe?
Honorable Leparto Salabe?
For item 1F, it is a proposed resolution number 2025-119B-P of the Sanggunian, entitled "A Resolution Requesting the Department of Science and Technology, Region 10, Through the Technical Mani- Through Engineer Romelia N. Rattilia, Ceso 3, to Conduct Training on Metrology Calibration for the Local Government Unit of Manolo Forte." Mr. Presiding Officer, it was recommended that the resolution should be addressed directly to Mr. Engineer Romela Rattilia from, instead of Ronald Pangan, Mr. Presiding Officer. So allow me to read the verses, Mr. Presiding Officer. The purpose of this resolution is the training on metrology calibration is vital to ensure the accuracy, consistency, and standardization of the measurements used in local government operations. It aims to equip the personnel of the local government the personnel of the local government unit of Manolo Forte with the necessary knowledge and skills to effectively manage, maintain, and calibrate the measurement instruments in accordance with established protocols and standards thereby enhancing their competency, strengthening institutional capacity, and ensuring accurate and consistent public service delivery. The Department of Science and Technology, Region 10, through its regional metrology laboratory possesses the technical expertise and capability to conduct training on metrology calibration. Whereas such training would significantly benefit the local government unit of Manolo Forte by enhancing the accuracy of the measurement. the local government unit of Manolo Fortis by enhancing the accurate and reliability of the measurement-related tasks across departments thereby contributing to more effective governance and improved service delivery. So with this, Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the proposed resolution.
There's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution respectfully requesting the Department of Science and Technology Region 10 through the technical or the regional director, engineer Romela Rattilia.
Ceso III.
Ceso III to conduct training on metrology calibration for the local government unit of Manolo Fortis. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Leparto Salabe.
For transferred item 1G, may we call on Honorable J. S. Alvarez?
Honorable Alvarez?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. This is proposed resolution number 2025-120B-B "Resolution Requesting the Manolo Fortis Roads and Traffic Administration, or MFRTA, to conduct nighttime operations along the San Miguel-Tukehari Road portion to deter illegal motorcycle drug races and to apprehend traffic violators." Whereas illegal motorcycle drug races have been frequently observed along the San Miguel-Tukehari Road portion, especially during the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight, often involving reckless driving, over speeding, and use of motorcycles with non-compliant loud mufflers. Whereas these activities endanger the lives and well-being of young bike riders as well as other motorists, spectators, and passersby. Whereas the races also generate loud noise disrupting the peace and rest of residents. Whereas the conduct of nighttime operations by the Manolo Fortis Roads and Traffic Administration will complement the Philippine National Police efforts to serve as further deterrent against these unlawful and hazardous acts. Now therefore, on a motion of Honorable Councilor Alvarez, be it resolved to respectfully request the Manolo Fortis Roads and Traffic Administration under the leadership of Mister Justado D. Inceño to conduct nighttime operations along the San Miguel-Tukehari Road portion, particularly between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 12:00 midnight to deter illegal motorcycle drug races and apprehend violators of road and traffic rules. Result further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Mister Justado D. Inceño head of the Manolo Fortis Roads and Traffic Administration, or MFRTA, for his information and immediate appropriate action. I move for the approval of this resolution.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution requesting the Manolo Fortis Roads and Traffic Administration to conduct nighttime operations along the San Miguel-Tukehari Road portion to deter illegal motorcycle drug races and to apprehend traffic violators. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? How about if the activity will be done before these specified hours?
Yes, that's also the comment of Councilor Miguel Di Mata. Five o'clock pa lang, naana daw sila dito.
Or beyond 12?
Can we, we can if, we can change this, Mister Chair. amend this to just night hour, nighttime, Mister Chair.
Nighttime or the we hours?
Yes. Bahala ng if, if, arti, mangad laon sila.
And also there are verses. Naapod ko no sa Mampayag, Sangkanan, Alae. Kana, mga areas. Yes. Going to Mampayag, na lagi, kana.
Lagi.
And kani pong from Sangkanan going to Kalugmanan. So, may mga pinihan mo ito?
I'm open to amendments, Mister Chair, to include those roads, Mister Chair. Kaya accidents can happen anywhere, Mister Chair. Murag, ibawa lang na to, naki, sayun mo, permit kita makaagin ito. Pero daghan ka daisa, mga roads.
So can we incorporate amendments? Can we? Can you propose the amendment, Honorable Di Mata? To include the other areas, no? And to have it open hours, open hour?
During night, Mister Chair.
During night, okay. So any further comments or amendments? So there being none, the motion is now approved subject to some amendments.
For transferred item 1J, may we call on the Chairman of the Committee on Cooperative, Honorable Christy Salabe?
Honorable Christy Salabe?
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. For item 1H, it is a letter from the municipal mayor requesting authority to enter into contract of service with Mister Claudine Marti Lianes, part-time trainer of bread and pastry production during the fourth Municipal Livelihood Summit of the LGU of Manolo Fortis. In the attached document, Mister Presiding Officer, is the contract of service wherein it stated here that the first party agrees to pay the second party a 1,400 pesos. And this is good for five days starting on July 21 to 25 for the bread and pastry production. And then also the contract shall start on July 21, 2025, and will expire on July 25, 2020-2025. So with this, Mister Presiding Officer, I move for its approval.
There's a motion for the approval of the request of the municipal mayor to enter into a contract of service with Mister Claudine Marti Lianes, part-time trainer for bread and pastry production during the fourth Municipal Livelihood Summit of LGU of Manolo Fortis. Any second?
I second.
Any comments?
Comments, Mister Presiding Officer? I'd like to ask the Executive Office, Mister Presiding Officer, that contracts as requested in the previous session, that it should be requested prior to the date. Because it's the same thing here, Mister Presiding Officer. It's the contract, we, it's done already. So it has to be noted, Mister Chair. Like.
So what's the pleasure of the?
Yeah, my, I move that this, this should be approved. But for the next request, Mister Presiding Officer, it should be done before the date of the contract.
Okay, so there's a motion for the approval. Um, there's a pending motion for the approval of this request. And being seconded. Are there any objections? For its approval? There being none, the motion is approved.
For item 1I, Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Cons, Salabe?
For item 1I, it is also a letter from the municipal treasurer noted by the municipal mayor requesting a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor and the municipal treasurer to open and transact with Land Bank of the Philippines, Manolo Fortis Branch for new depository accounts for econsulta and PCB collections. Number 1, LGU Manolo Fortis for healthcare institution charges. And number 2, LGU Manolo Fortis professional fee. So with this, Mister Presiding Officer, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of the request of the municipal mayor to pass a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor and municipal treasurer to open and transact with the Land Bank of the Philippines, Manolo Fortis Branch for a new depository accounts for econsulta and PCB collections. As follows, LGU Manolo Fortis for HCI charges and LGU Manolo Fortis for professional fee. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Salabe.
For transferred item 1J, may I call on the Committee on Cooperative?
Honorable Salabe?
Honorable Salabe.
For item 1J, it is an accreditation application of the United Farmer Sector Association of Manolo Fortis. In the submitted documents, Mister Presiding Officer, everything is in order and it is complete. So I move for its approval, Mister Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the accreditation application of the United Farmer Sector Association of Manolo Fortis Incorporated. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
For transferred item 1K, may I request the Vice Chair of Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, Honorable El Silveir Dagunlay?
Honorable Dagunlay?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. So submitting here is a copy of Sangguyang Kabatan Annual Budget, calendar year 2024. Twenty-four? Barangay Lindaban, that's Technical Review for Review and Appropriate Action. So Mister Chair, this is late also, Mister Chair. So I move for the approval for this annual budget for Barangay Lindaban, Mister Chair.
Um, excuse me, that's your referred item. Can we give him the correct realignment?
The addendum 1K?
Ah, 1K. Sorry, Mister Presiding Officer. This is to formally request the Sangguyang Bayan of the municipality for the approval of realignment amounting to 602,860 pesos from various portions of appropriation to be made available as an additional appropriation to various of the state office of the programs. So for non-office charter day celebration, uh, total of 602,860,000. For another, uh, non-office aid to community sports development, maintenance prices for food supplies expenses, other MOA job order services, municipal budget office, maintenance and other operating expenses, other MOA job order services, municipal mayor's office, maintenance and other operating expenses, traveling expenses, also total to, at the same, is 602,860,000. So this budget from local finance committee, signature by Chairy V. Amora Magalunas, the Planning and Development Office, OIC, Roy Lovier Azaris, acting municipal budget officer, and municipal government department head, our treasurer, Mam Suraida Losada, annotated by our executive officer, municipal mayor Roelio N. Quinho, Mister Chair. So I move for the approval for this realignment, Mister Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the realignment of funds amounting to 602,860 pesos from various portions of appropriations as an additional appropriation for various expenses of the state office and programs. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved. Can we have a 30-second health break?
I saw, Mister Presiding Officer.
Honorable Raquel Abales?
Honorable Abales?
Mister Presiding Officer, for the proposed resolution number 2025-121B-B, a resolution congratulating the Honorable Mayor Roelio N. Quinho and the local government of Manolo Fortis for receiving a special award for his unwavering support for the matatag na serbisyo pat nobay sa tunay na pagbabago of the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology, BGMP, Region 10, given on their 34th anniversary at Cove Garden, Cagayan, Dioro City, authored by yours truly. For the whereas as, the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology, or BGMP, plays a crucial role in promoting public safety and rehabilitation of inmates, ensuring that the rights of the detainees are respected and upheld. Whereas in Republic Act Number 10592, also known as the Expanded Good Conduct Time Allowance Law, emphasizes the importance of rehabilitation and the reintegration of inmates into society, thus aligning with the goals of local government units in enhancing public welfare. Whereas the Local Government Code of 1991, Republic Act Number 7160, empowers the local government units to initiate programs and projects that promote the general welfare of their constituents, including support for law enforcement and penal institutions. Whereas the unwavering support of Honorable Mayor Roelio N. Quinho and the local government of Manolo Fortis for the BGMP's initiative, particularly the matatag na serbisyo pat nobay sa tunay na pagbabago program, demonstrates a commitment to the effective governance and community service. Whereas the recognition of Mayor Quinho as a special awardee during the 34th anniversary celebration of BGMP, Region 10 signifies the impact of his leadership and the collaborative efforts of the local government and advancing the ideals of justice and rehabilitation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the members of the 21st Sangguyang Bayan of Manolo Fortis to congratulate the Honorable Mayor Roelio N. Quinho and the local government of Manolo Fortis for their outstanding support and commitment to the BGMP's mission and for being recognized as a social awardee at 34th anniversary celebration. Uh, I move for the approval of this resolution.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution congratulating the Honorable Mayor Roelio N. Quinho and the local government unit of Manolo Fortis for being a special awardee for his unwavering support to the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology, Region 10, given on July 30, 2025, in the Cove Garden CDO. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
For the addendum number 3, Committee on Education, but may I request? request Honorable Kristy Salabi to read the resolution.
The Honorable Salabi.
For item 1M, it is a proposed Resolution Number 2025-122B-P. Resolution congratulating Mister Jonathan Merida, a resident of Alaie, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon for graduating cum laude in the 80th commencement exercise of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines held on July 30, 2025 at the atrium Lim Kit Kais Center, Kagayan di Oro. It is authored by Honorable Rena Kenyo. So the whereas is as follows. Academic excellence is a milestone worthy of recognition and it is fitting to commend individuals who bring pride and honor to the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche through their accomplishments. Whereas Mister Jonathan Merida, an upstanding resident of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon successfully graduated cum laude, earning the degree of Bachelor of Science in Technology Communication Management, major in Communication Management. Where Mister Merida dedication, perseverance, and excellence in academics reflects the values of diligence and commitment that the youth of Manolo Fortiche strive to emulate. Mister Merida is one of the scholars of the LGU Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, whose support and guidance have contributed significantly to his success. His outstanding achievements brings pride not only to his family and community but also to the entire Municipality of Manolo Fortiche and has exemplified the potential and capability of its citizens to excel in the field of education. So with this, Mister Presiding, the Sangguniyang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche deems to it proper to extend its warmest and congratulations and commendation to Mister Jonathan Merida for his exemplary academic accomplishments and as a model of inspiration to the youth. So with this, Mister Presiding Officer, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of the resolution congratulating Mister Jonathan Merida, resident of Alaie, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon for graduating cum laude in the 88 commencement exercises of University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines held on July 30, 2025 at the atrium Lim Kit Kais Center, Kagayan di Oro City. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Salabi.
The last item is the item 1F to the Committee on Transportation.
1N.
1N. 1F, no, only 1N.
1N, Honorable.
El Silverdagonlay.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer, for endorsement for franchise renewal coming from Manolo Fortiche Roads and Traffic Administration dated July 30 to 2025. The following operators, Aaron Isli Quanan from Puruk Uno damilag, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, and Rodel P. Salarda from Sunfor, Alaie, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon. So for this, Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the approval for this two operator of tricab coming from Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon.
So there's a motion for the approval of the renewal of application for tricab franchise of Mister Aaron Isli Quanan and Rodel Salarda. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Dagonlay.
Now we are done with our transferred items. Any announcements? Honorable CJ Padin?
Our session next week will be on Tuesday. Not coordinated, then it is executive. August 5 because August 6 and 7 will be the mandatory NEO of the, from the DILG, request of the DILG in Kagayan di Oro. So Tuesday will be our regular session next week. But we will still have our committee hearing on Monday. Okay, any more announcements? The Honorable Cordavis?
This is from the Municipal Health Office, please be guided nga, inform tanila nga atong new Under Secretary Gregorio, Dr. Gregorio Greg Timorillo Jr. and RD Solficio Henry Fishong M. De Gaspie Jr. will be visiting select super health centers in Bukidnon in August 1, tomorrow, that is Friday. So ang scheduled dinis sa Manolo Fortiche between 7 to 9. Okay, from 9 o'clock mo departasad siya from Manolo to Sumilao.
Nige, slake, 8.
Oh, 8, 8, yes, 8. So kung natay time, naadito sa atong puluton tomorrow, mo welcomes atong RD and to.
Good luck, Cons Joy.
Good luck, Cons Joy.
Thank you.
Kaya man na yan eh.
Monday? Okay. Any more announcements?
Mister Chair, Mister Presiding Officer, I move to adjourn the regular session.
So there's a motion for the adjournment of today's session, any second? Seconded, any objections? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.